Most holy and heavenly Father, we come before you asking for your blessing. First of all, would we like to thank you for the ring that you've given us? We need this ring, and you have provided for us, and we ask for more in a gracious way. Oh, Lord, please look over and guide all the decisions that are made here today to allow those to make good consideration and good decisions. Lord, we ask that you watch over and guide each and every one of our individuals who work so hard for our community, whether in the city or the county. Our EMTs, our firefighters, our paramedics, our police, our sheriff's department, all those who go in harm's way. And, Lord, I'd like to ask for your blessing on a citizen who passed this last week who was gracious to many of us here, former Senator, United States Marine Colonel Bob Marshall. We ask these blessings in your name, oh, Lord.
Amen. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, September 25th, 5:30 p.m. We'll get started.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public comments, please.
Thank you.
All right, public comments. Mr. Walker, please. Bill?
This is kind of near and dear to my heart. And kind of sad, but in this county, I don't think it would be a bad thing that on Thursday, if we had lowered our flag here at half-mast for Bob Marshall. Bob Marshall took and served not only active duty in the Marines and in the reserves for like 30 years, and he come out a Colonel. If anybody knows anything about the Marine Corps, a Colonel is almost equivalent to a general because they're so small. Not only did he do that, but he come back and he served our community at the community college. Heaven knows how many things he was asked to do and sit on boards. I'm sure they were high paying jobs. Like, I knew somebody sits on one of our boards out here that I'm sure they paying a lot. But all I'm asking, and I would think that would be, plus, he was asked, and he didn't run and become a senator, and he was our guy. And I'm one of them not-headed Republicans, or Democrats, we get it right. Not-headed Democrats, but I will say this much, I did vote for Bob Marshall twice. Because he was a guy that if you caught him at the new grill, or he didn't duck, you could actually go, and if you had an issue, even if you disagreed with him, and we had some disagreements, but that's fine. He still treated you with respect, and I had the same respect for that fine gentleman. Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll take that in consideration. I knew Mr. Marshall quite well, a very special individual, so. Okay, that's the last of the other comments section. We will move to Ms. Emily Franks. I bet that's you. Jared Gilmore Phillips, presentation of the audit. Thank you.
I'm Emily Franks. Jared Gilmore Phillips here to present the 2022 Bourbon County Audit. If you'll go ahead and flip to pages one, two, and three, your blue book, and I think there's more over here if anybody else would like a copy. This is going to show that we had an unmodified opinion on the report of the financial statements for Bourbon County for fiscal year 2022. And there is on page two, I'll point out, it's an emphasis of matter paragraph, which means the numbers that presented here at the beginning of the year are slightly different from how you saw them for the 2021 audit, and that'll be explained further in the back of the footnotes. Page four and five, this is a snapshot of all of the individual funds within Bourbon County. When it says unencumbered cash balance, that means that those numbers include your accounts payable. So the beginning, of course, will be your 2021 unencumbered numbers. You've got receipts and expenditures, and then the unencumbered cash 2022 is the fourth column over. If you review that column, you'll notice that there's no negative numbers, which tells us that the county as a whole was in compliance with cash basis, compliance. Then you go ahead and add back your encumbrances and accounts payable, and that takes you to what your actual cash balance was in the bank at the end of 2022. On page five at the bottom, you can see the actual composition of cash. So you've got cash on hand, demand deposits, and certificates of deposits. And then you go ahead and you subtract off the agency funds. Agency funds are funds that are considered to belong to somebody else, not the county itself, and we'll talk about those a little bit further back. On page six and seven and eight, this talks about the general accounting policies that Bourbon County follows, probably the same as what you've seen in prior year audits. On page nine, there's a section that talks about compliance and accountability. For 2022, the county was in compliance with cash and budget laws that the state of Kansas sets out there. We did note that the county was not in compliance with an inventory. There's a statute out there that says that all the departments within the county are required to take an annual inventory, turn it into the county clerk by December 31st, and then the commissioners are supposed to review and approve. So we are making the recommendation that that statute is followed from here on. Footnote number three, bottom of page nine, this talks about how the county's funds are held and invested. On 10, the bottom paragraph of footnote number three, this is how much cash was in the bank, and then it talks about how and where those funds are held. So you had five different banks that the money is, were held at, and you are required by law to have those funds covered either by FDIC insurance or through securities pledged, and this just lists out how those funds are covered. But note number four, this lists out all of the lease obligations that the county has. And you'll see there's quite a few of those. If you actually flip to page 14 and 15, this gives you a better idea of all the general obligation bonds and the finance leases that the county had during the year. There were some that were paid off, but there was also some new ones that the county entered into during the year. Page 15, this lists out all your future maturities. This is probably something that was also discussed when you guys worked on your budget But note number six, if you go to the third paragraph down, this talks about how much money you as a county contributed on behalf of your employees to the CAPERS plan. CAPERS has an actuarial study done, and every three years, they take and project what the potential liability the county would have if CAPERS were to not be able to make all their payments. And so there's a net pension liability that's noted, but it's never expected that the county is actually going to have to pay these liabilities, but CAPERS says you have to report it. And that's in the fourth paragraph down, it's $3.7 million. Footnote number seven, this talks about other obligations from operations, which talks about your compensated absence plan as well as other post-employment benefits. And at the end of December 31st, 2022, there was a liability that was noted, $20,707 for annual leave and $34,293 for sick leave. Now, that means if someone's employment was to be terminated, the county would be liable to pay out those leave and sick balances. Footnote number eight, this talks about risk management and how the county handles risk management, and that's through obtaining insurance. So you guys are part of K-Works, which is the Kansas Workers Comp. And then you also have K-Camp, which is just your general liability insurance. Footnote number nine, this talks about significant contingencies, and this really refers back to the fact that you guys receive grant dollars, and there's always a possibility that if you're not in compliance with those grants, that your grantor may ask for money back. We don't foresee that happening, but we just have to disclose it. Footnote number 10, this is transfers. We all, you have to list out the to and the from, which all would have been things probably discussed when you guys worked on your budget process. And then footnote number 11, this is a prior period adjustment, which we referenced in the auditor's report at the beginning. There were some reclassification from funds that were previously considered agency funds. They have been moved forward to funds that actually belong to the county. Because an agency fund is essentially a distribution fund where you collect those dollars and then they belong to somebody else, so in the end, you would pay them out. We noted no subsequent events, and that's footnote number 12. On page 20, this shows your compliance with the budget laws set up by the state of Kansas, and you will notice there were no budget violations for the year, which is good. Page, starting on page 21 through a good portion of the rest of this packet, is the revenues and expenditures of the county. So the first column, those are the prior year actual, so those numbers you would have seen in the 2021 audit. Then the second column is the actual, then you've got a budget column, and then there's a variance over/under. Now, to remind you that counties and Kansas entities that follow Kansas cash basis are bound by budget law on a fund basis, but not on a line-by-line basis. So you have to look at the fund as a whole when you're looking at those budget authorities. We're going to go ahead. Most of these individual funds you guys discussed in your budget process, and there's a substantial number of them, so I don't think you want to go through every single one of them individually. So we'll go ahead and flip back to page 77. 77 is where we start the agency funds, and these essentially are the distribution funds. So most of these is where the county levies the taxes, and then you turn around and you pay out the taxes to the entities. So you'll see here, it's broken down a little differently than you've probably seen it in the past. You'll have all your subdivision funds, so cities, townships, schools, cemeteries, watershed districts, fire districts. And then on to page 79, you'll see there's some other agency funds. Some of these are cash held with outside, outside departments of the county. Then there's distributable funds on page 80. So the county, this is the summarization of the taxes levied that were actually collected, and it also shows any delinquents or, I mean, RV, commercial, they're all listed here. We do like to remind our counties that these are funds that are held for others. So if any of these agency funds were to ever become negative, then you would want to make sure that you do not pay out as much the subsequent year, and so that these either come to a zero balance or a positive balance. On page 81, the county spent more than $750,000 of federal funds in 2022. Therefore, there's a compliance audit that needs to be done with regards to those federal awards. You will see here that the majority of the federal funds that were spent were the coronavirus state and local recovery funds, and that was 1.8 million is what was spent there. But because you were more than 750, we're required to report and then also test. And so of this $2 million that was spent, we've tested at least 40% of these expenses, and there's compliance requirements that we have to follow as far as our testing is concerned. Page 82 and 83, and everything from here back is all because of the county having to have a single audit, which is because you spent more than that $750,000. So 82 and 83, this is showing your compliance with government auditing standards, and this is on the financial statement level. So we did not have any issues that arose as far as financial statements that would be required to be reported for government auditing standards. And the Uniform Guidance Report, which is on page 84, this also shows that you were in compliance with the major programs that we tested for audit purposes. On 87, this is a snapshot of what those reports already said, and that we give an adverse opinion for generally accepted accounting principles because the county has elected to follow Kansas cash basis. And at the beginning of every year, you guys sign a GAAP waiver and vote to follow Kansas cash basis. There is no internal control issues noted with the government auditing standard side or the federal awards. Your major program that we reviewed was the coronavirus state and local recovery. And then on page 88, this is a summary of what was noted as a finding in the 2021 audit that staff within the county have found ways and have gone ahead and reconciled appropriately. And so we, as auditors, say that this finding is considered complete, and they've fulfilled what they needed to as far as compliance is concerned. Okay. And it doesn't look like mine has. There is some reports at the beginning of your packet that are loose reports, hopefully. Yes, yes. For some reason, my copy didn't get that. But so there, the very first letter is a presentation letter, and this talks about how, or if we were to ever have any problems with employees within the county or staff, those would be noted in this report. This report also notes that there are audit adjustments that were found through our procedures that we felt needed to be recorded due to the materiality level. Those are also included after that report. There's a list of the journal entries. So in the county, we'll go ahead and post those into the CIC software so that your records and the audit report itself will be in agreement. And then there is another letter after the journal entries, and that's the management representation letter. And that just lists out that you guys have disclosed all information to us, whether it be through the treasurer, the clerk, or the finance director, and that there's nothing that hasn't been disclosed to us already. Do you have any questions of me?
And you said no violations?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Patty. I see Patty's standing up. Thank you, everyone.
It was a pleasure working with your staff.
Well, thank you for the report. Thank you for the audit. You guys have any questions? Clifton, Nelson?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and drop engagement letters off with Jennifer, and then you guys can review it a later date.
Very good report. Thank you. Okay. Susan Walker, Executive Session.
I need a executive session for about 10 minutes with Jennifer, myself, the three commissioners, and Justin Meeks to discuss non-elected personnel.
Make a motion to go into executive session. Case A75, H4319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. The three commissioners, Susan Walker, Justin Meeks, and Jennifer. Our clerk will be for 10 minutes. We'll return here at 5:59.
Might as well make it.
Six.
Five.
Six.
Oh, oh. How about 1,800?
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
[laughing]
[inaudible]
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 Make a motion, resume normal session, no action.
Second.
Put a motion in second and discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, public works update, Eric might not be in here.
Health insurance benefits.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Health insurance benefit, Derek, I'm sorry. Health insurance benefits, all right, we're going to discuss that.
Well.
Susan has advised that if we leave the state pool, we need to do it by October first, correct?
Well, this is the first I'm hearing about the details is today, so.
Yeah, that's a short notice, but I agree, but. And this opportunity comes up again in one year to leave the pool if we choose to. But, but the reason we would stay in the pool or out of the pool probably won't change any 12 months, will it? I mean, as far as details, or is the cost, maybe?
Well, we would save more money.
Yeah.
In a year because we wouldn't have the.
Penalty.
The penalty.
That's if we don't have to hire somebody.
And we, we potentially at that point, somebody would be trained to be able to do the, the stuff, possibly. Or that would be a goal, I think, to, to have a person trained up to where they could do what the state plan provides. Because at this point, I guess, after we look at it, the thirty-seven, forty thousand dollar savings would be burned up pretty quick in having to hire a consultant to do those things. So we actually would be net zero.
Break even.
We would be neutral. So, or worse, or we would, or worse, possibly, or a little better. I mean, who, you know, that's, who knows? So I, I don't, I mean, realistically, I'm, I'm in favor. I would actually, I would like to leave the state plan personally.
The one thing I can tell you is that premiums are not decreasing for the state plan next year.
Right, so our premiums will stay the same for the state plan, which is good. Is what Susan just said, somebody knows. I mean, I, I would probably choose to leave the state plan. But with the fact that. It's not, it's not really going to be a savings and possibly will be a savings next year. I would, I would probably like to do it next year and I, and Nelson's just hearing about it, I think. You know, which is your fault because you went on vacation. Did you have a good time?
A very good time, yeah.
Good, good, no, I'm kidding. But anyway, I mean, so I, I just, I think we're probably should have to keep what we have. And that would just be my opinion at this point.
It seems like we don't know enough to upset the apple cart with something as important as insurance right now. Because I don't, I know that if, you know, if they come say, hey, we need to hire somebody else, I'm going to be, I'm going to be, no. I don't want to hire anybody else, so.
And, and that's the, that's the problem is, is I, I think that the plan that we would go to is no different than the one we're in. Actually, it's almost identical. One deductible is fifty dollars higher and one actually is fifty dollars lower. Is the only difference between the plans, I think, from what I saw. So the plan's pretty much identical, we would save money. But after the penalty, that savings is thirty-seven.
Fifty-eight, I think.
Something like that.
Fifty-eight.
But, oh, it's fifty-eight thousand savings, but we don't have the staff to administer it at this point. So, and, and my goal would be that we have that staff by next year to where we can do this. That would be my wish.
Well, I don't totally disagree with a lot of the things Clifton just said. But we've been looking about, talking about leaving the state pool for three years. This is my third year, so. We've spent a lot of time talking about it and again, I agree with many, many things he said here. But what concerns me, why are we not ready? After three years of talking about it, you know, I don't know. I hope that we don't pass it tonight to leave the pool, that the next 12 months, we learn something from this and get ready.
Well, my expectation is we would be ready.
I hope so.
Or there might be budgets cut.
Yeah, I understand that. So, I'm going to do this. Since we've been talking about this for three years, I'm going to make a motion to leave the state pool and go with a private carrier.
I guess second with discussion. I'll go ahead and second it.
I wouldn't, okay, okay. Do you have to second it and have a discussion? Okay.
Now, you made the motion, so you're either dying or.
Okay, got a second. Any discussion, please?
You know, our staff has indicated that we can't do it right now without hiring someone else. If we could do it without hiring someone else, I'd be all for it.
My response to that, we started on this eight months ago. I don't understand. But I agree. It's, it's a lot of work, gonna be a lot of work. Any further discussion?
What do you think, Clifton?
You know, I mean, I mean, we can, we can, we can point fingers and, and.
Yeah, there's no point in any of that.
And do this, but at the end of the day, they. Personally, I think the, the finger, I mean. Don't take, neither one of you take this the wrong way, but if we're pointing fingers, I'm, I'm, we're going to be pointing it to there. But I think they have so much on their plate already.
I agree.
That they haven't been able to do it. Is that a fair statement? Been able to train somebody, there hadn't been anybody, I mean, there's just multiple things. It's not your guys' fault for not being ready. There's, you have.
I think we could both talk to why.
No, I don't want you to do that.
I wasn't pointing fingers, I just shame on us for not doing better than our planning.
I don't, no, I don't, we don't need to go back in the past. My opinion, you guys are doing everything you can in your power to, I mean, we just got an audit that was. So thank you, Patty, Susan and Jennifer, that was not what my statement was being made for. But I think you go back in the history and the problems that they're dealing with from the past, how about that? Is that a fair statement? The problems they're having to deal with from the past has kept them from other priorities that would benefit this county.
Very good statement, Clifton.
And unfortunately, that's where we are. They're doing, in my, as near as I can tell, everything in their power to get past problems that they did not create or, nor this commission created. So, and anyway, unfortunately, it is what it is, so.
Any further discussion? I had to call to vote, I mean, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye, I mean, right now, right now, I guess, so.
Motion fails. Two, one. Now, Eric Bailey, it's your turn.
How are you, Eric?
Good. All right, we'll be fairly short here tonight. Had a good windstorm over the weekend, I lost a wooden privacy fence out at the shop. Had some trees blocking the road out by the shop. Got that opened up, cleaned up today, opened up yesterday, cleaned up today. Yale Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, Yale Road's been milled up.
All of it, made from, yeah.
We have to go back and finish about a, I don't know, a foot strip that we're milling and.
Heard about that all the way in South Korea.
You did, I tried to send you a text, so it was one of those deals that it just happened. Overnight, had somebody back out, we were next on it, so. Anyhow, road is milled up, we're continuing to haul gravel up, get it compacted in, leveled out. Go from there.
I see, you answered that email.
Yes.
From the lady, let's see, I got another. Have you talked to a woman named Brenda at all up there at Hidden Valley?
I believe I've emailed, I believe I've emailed to Brenda. I've emailed about five or six people up there.
You know, obviously, their concern is we're not going to have a new, one mile of pavement a year from now. But we, I remember, I know we all, words are words, we all said that was going to be a priority, what, I mean. It says pending commission approval, well, if we have the funds, then I'm sure the commission's going to approve it, I would say. So, because we all kind of committed to it from what I remember. But, I mean, how realistically do we think a year from now, when we milled it up? Can we get a mile of it repaved like we said we would?
I am going to propose that, that'll be up to you three to decide.
You're going to, you're going to have the budget for it?
I would hope to be able to finish Eagle Road, we hope to get a mile of Eagle done this year, if not a little more and then finish Eagle and do a mile of, of there pending approval from the three of you. And, and who knows, I'll just go ahead and say it, some other road could blow up between now and then as well, so, but.
We do have several roads. Yeah, one of them, but we've got several roads that hasn't been anything done in ten or twelve years, sooner or later, we've got to address.
Yeah, I remember we all did commit to, you know, barring some emergency, we all committed to getting Yale Road paved a mile at a time.
And I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, that's what we committed to.
That we sure did.
And, and that's what I've told everyone in the, in the emails. We'll put it on the list for the work session next year and.
Which mile do you want them?
We'll have to, we'll have to see what people think about that.
That's a good question, they're going to ask you.
Probably further to the east, but I don't know. Probably starting from the east end.
That would be my guess, from the emails I've received.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it'll be an interesting spring work session, because again,
Right.
we've got two forty, we've got J. Og, hasn't been touched, east or west, I'm sorry.
When do we foresee having that work session, on what month?
It's usually late winter, early spring somewhere, so somewhere between February, March, April, somewhere in that general area.
Yeah.
Late February, middle March. So, anyhow, that's where we're at on that. Once we get Yale Road finished up, we're headed to two hundred and thirty-third, lay asphalt there, then going to Garland after that. Next, I have the bridge at a hundred and sixtieth and Fern, kinda some exciting news here. KDOT, um, let the project out for bid. Uh, estimate was like four hundred and eleven thousand, I believe, and it came in at two ninety-nine, fif- nine fifty-three, and our share is going to be sixty-six thousand. So, that's very good for us, if you guys so approve that, I need you to sign, make a motion to approve it, then sign this, so like send it back to the state. Mission Construction out of St. Paul was a low bid at two ninety-nine, nine fifty-three. They had three bids total. See if I can find them here. Had Reese Construction, not sure where they're out of, they were three twenty-eight, one seventy, and B and B Bridge at three seventy-two, two hundred. So. You guys wanna approve that, or?
Yeah, I thought we already did.
Just have to sign the...
Approve it, didn't you? And I know we didn't approve the bid, but...
The other, the other...
So, like...
Other one was Grant, wasn't it?
Oh, this is a different...
This is the one that, the actual one out for bid on a hundred and sixty.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. So, I make a motion to, uh, that we accept this particular bid and allow myself, Nelson, and Jim to sign it along with the county clerk.
There's your project number, if you need to say that.
For, project number zero, zero, six, C dash five, one, five, two, dash, zero, one, S T P dash C five, one, five, two, oh, one.
Which is the bridge at a hundred and sixty.
A hundred and sixtieth and Fern, and our share, is sixty-six thousand dollars of a construction and engineering less three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, a hundred and eighty dollars of federal funds.
Second.
And a motion is second.
Yeah, okay, chairman's gonna sign it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Jim, you're on the top, I believe, is where it says, Jim.
Here, yeah.
Did that Nelson get two bridges?
No, that was our...
That's his, yeah.
He got the big bridge, he got the little bridge.
I ain't got nothing.
I don't, were you here for that?
I watched it on YouTube.
Sixtieth and Grant, okay. Yeah. And then the last thing that I have is, and Nelson, you weren't here, if you watched on YouTube, you know, but October sixth, we're having a retirement party for Charlie Elliott.
Yeah.
Thirty-two years, so, and that's at eleven-thirty at Public Works. And that's all I got, anything for me?
I don't have anything.
Nope.
Look.
Thank you for responding to that email from that lady.
Yeah. And I, I understand where they're coming from.
Yeah.
But we need to do this to get the road corrected, and then they'll have a...
Good writing, making it safe.
Yep.
As we go into an executive session for attorney-client privilege, um, contracts with Eric, with three commissioners and myself, seven minutes. Yeah, I'm, maybe the agenda, Eric, um, we talked about it briefly this afternoon, and just wanna go in and have a conversation. See if you all think about a couple of things, and then if I need to draw up a contract, I will, you giving permission to do it?
Make a motion to go to executive session, uh, KSA seventy-five, dash, forty-three, nineteen. B two for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Uh, three commissioners, Eric Bailey and Justin Meeks, be for seven minutes. We'll return at six-thirty-two.
Second.
Um, motion is second, any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Make a motion or we make a question?
Yeah, I make a motion to allow the county counselor to rewrite a contract that we have with the Beth Quarry right now.
I second that motion. Any discussion?
I will say that where the quarry is at, where the rock is going, myself and my family, immediate family, has no legal right to that property whatsoever. It is my mother's and not mine, my kids, nobody's. It is strictly my mother's and we have no right to that property in the future either.
Yeah. Well, and once you drive into this, if the public is concerned, we've run out of our boundaries where we can crush, or we have to have a new contract to expand where we can go and crush more. It's great rock, but we've got to do it legally. So, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
We've got one abstaining, two aye. Motion carries. Can you go back in?
I'm asked on the agenda, Mr. President.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Meeks, you're on the agenda, sir.
You know, we've done pretty well about not going to executive sessions for a while, and I apologize to the crowd, I guess. This is going to be a long one. I don't think I want to come back in and go back in and back and forth again. So, I'd ask for a 20-minute executive session. We're going to be dealing with two contracts and then a discussion that is dealing with attorney-client proprietary information. So, we can't, I mean, we can go back in for proprietary if you want, but the AG's office says if we explain what we're doing, we can go in for both. And the contract and the proprietary information actually kind of go together. So, I do foresee us possibly coming back out and going back in. I just don't want to go 30 minutes and we sit and look at each other, but there's a high probability that we're going to come back out and go back in again.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into executive session, KSA 75 best 4319 B2 for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship dealing with contracts and proprietary information. Be for 20 minutes. We return here at 6:55.
Yep, second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
How about that for this day?
You guys already go back?
No.
Make a motion to re- Make a motion, resume normal session. No action and we are going to go back into executive session.
Yeah, second.
Got a motion, is that come back in record session, no action, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Make a motion, go into executive session, case A 75 v. 43, 19b2 for consultation with attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship dealing with contracts, be for 10 minutes, we return here at 7:07.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, aye.
Okay.
I'm going to amend that motion into be the three commissioners and Justin Meads as part of that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the amendment, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Yeah, now we're 6:08 because we lost a minute there.
We lost a minute there.
Make a motion to go back into open session, no action? Second.
Got a motion and second, in discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I know, I don't have any comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm too rattled, I can't even think.
Commission comment, I don't have anything to say, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned, second, all in favor, aye?